All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our city council meeting, regular meeting, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five into session. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, council and everybody else for that. Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Rosner.
Here.
Council President Young.
Here.
Council Brousse.
Here.
Council Scott.
All my notes are down here.
And Council Giles.
Here.
And Council Stan Key and Council May is are absent.
All right, thank you Sylvia. Approval of the agenda, I understand we have a motion.
Yes, we need to remove item eleven, the adjourned to executive session, so I will make a motion to remove item eleven from the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of removing item eleven from the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion passes.
amended. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you council. All right, on the consent agenda tonight, we have one item, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two-zero, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Southwest Arrow Street Expansion Project.
Remove consent, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you council. All right, citizen comments, Sylvia.
I have none, mayor.
All right, and I am not seeing anything on, doesn't, could, Andrea, I, somebody's, no, that's our note taker.
Oh.
That's the note taker. I think we're good, so, and Sylvia, you didn't have any?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we will move on to presentations. We have one presentation tonight. We have a proclamation proclaiming April twenty-first through twenty-five is, April twenty-first through twenty-five of twenty-twenty-five is National Community Development Block Grant Week. Council Young, would you like to tell us a little bit about this program since you're so heavily involved with it?
Yes, so this is, Community Development Block Grant is a committee that I sit on with Washington County, it's federal funds, that helps fund public services, public facilities, public services, public facilities, home projects, and it, for like the public services, it typically goes to help aid people from becoming homeless or helping with rent assistance, utility assistance, housing for youth in crisis, usually the top items of public services. And then as far as public facilities, mainly for Sherwood, that's come, has come from our senior center, and I have an amount here now that they gave me. The amount that our city has received to date from CDPG is two million four hundred and ninety-five thousand, and that includes the recent two hundred and eight thousand where we did the siding and window replacement on our senior center, so that's, we've gotten a lot of funding from that, and it, Sherwood doesn't have a lot of things that we can apply for just because of the makeup of our community, but our senior center is one area that qualifies usually.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, it's a great program, and we've got to do some good, good projects in Sherwood through that program. And we always like having projects that other people pay for, that's a wonderful thing. So we have a proclamation here that I'm gonna go ahead and read. Proclamation, National Community Development Week, April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas the week of April twenty-first, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, has been designated a National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. Whereas, CDPG program provides annual funding and flexible ability to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a sustainable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnership Program provides funding in local communities to create safe, affordable housing, opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over one million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. Whereas, over the program's history, our community has received a total of two-point-four-nine-five-six-two-nine million dollars in CDPG funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Sherwood designates the week of April twenty-first through April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five as National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of housing stock, infrastructure, public surfaces, and economic vitality to our community. Be it further resolved that this community urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and then, and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program by supporting increased fundings for both programs in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. In witness thereof, I have hereto set in my hand and caused the seal of the City of Sherwood, Oregon to be affixed on this day, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
One more.
That was the one one, yes, anyways, great program. That's that, Sylvia. And Kim, you have been on that board for how many years now?
Eight.
Eight years, yeah, so it's, there's a lot of boards and commissions that we liaison, liaison to as counselors where you just have to go and sit and listen and go home. This one is a lot of work.
Lot of involvement coming, heading up into it, we actually, the people applying for grants come give us presentations, and then we score every grant application individually as a committee, there's one representative from each city on the, on the board, and one from the county, and then they combine all of our scores, and that's how the funding gets taken, so it's, it's real, I really enjoy it.
Back, back when I was a counselor, I went to one of your meetings where they were doing training, and they handed me this binder like three inches thick that they expected me to read. I handed it to you. All right, anyways, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight, two ordinances. Sylvia, do you want to read us in?
The Sherwood City Council will hold public hearings this evening to receive testimony on two ordinances. Ordinance two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-two, changing the Traffic Safety Committee to a board and amending Sherwood Municipal Code two-point-zero-eight-point-zero-eight-seven. This is the first hearing on that ordinance. And ordinance two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-three, amending Sherwood Municipal Code Chapter two-point-zero-eight, creating a youth advisory board. This is also a first hearing on that item. Staff will present a staff report, questions if any by the council for staff, we will then receive written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing, no other comments will be heard from the public. Final comments by staff, questions of staff if any by the council, followed by council discussion. This is the first hearing before the city council on both these ordinances. Generally, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. The second hearing on these items is currently scheduled for the May sixth council meeting. However, in accordance with the city charter, the council reserves the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing by unanimous vote of all sitting council members. If you wish to speak, please fill out a request to speak form and submit it to the city recorder prior to the time the public hearing is open for testimony. The mayor will recognize people who wish to speak, any comments must be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and place of residence for the record as this hearing will be recorded.
All right, thank you Sylvia, and so our first ordinance of tonight is our Traffic Safety Committee, converting that to a, well, I'm just gonna let Sebastian talk about that or give us a.
Thank you, Mayor Rosner and council. I have two ordinances today, we're starting first with a change of an existing committee to a Traffic Safety Board. The purpose of the group will not change, as written in the code, the, the purpose maintain, would, would remain the same. The biggest difference would be how it is organized. It's currently organized as a committee under the Police Advisory Board, but to further empower this group, I'm proposing that we change it to a board. The, one of the main benefits of changing to a board would be that it would have a council liaison assigned to them. And for all intents and purposes, they have the same scope, same resources, and they will still coordinate with the Police Advisory Board.
All right, did we have any written testimony?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. Any questions for Sebastian?
I think you said this, the same budget as well, or is it all just recommendations?
The, there's no change in budget.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Sylvia, do we have anyone that gives, wants to give testimony?
I do not, mayor, no.
Okay, and I'm not seeing anyone online either, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Any additional discussion amongst council?
No, I'm, I'm just saying I was, been probably one of the loudest voices in pushing for this for quite some time, I'm, I'm excited to see that we're here, I think, I think empowering the board now and, and allowing them to report directly to us, make recommendations directly to us, and having one of us sit with them, I think is, is the right step forward, and I think they've done a good job over the last, I don't know, five, six years now, they've been, been around there, so, so I think this is the logical next step, though, I'm all in favor.
Awesome.
It's in alignment with our goals.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent.
I have one question.
Yes.
There's one section in here that says two of the board members shall be members of Police Advisory Board, and sometimes, what if we can't get two? I mean, that's the second, there are already volunteers on Police Advisory Board, what if only one person steps up, then we leave an empty position, or would we fill it with a community member? I mean, that, that the shall, can it be may?
If you'd like to propose an oral amendment, we certainly can do it that way.
She, what do you think? Because sometimes we've had a struggle getting two people, and we, and then we've been using one as an alternate when really we weren't, didn't realize they were both supposed to be there for a while, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree that it may would give us some leeway just in case. I know currently we have two people that are interested, but that doesn't mean that down the road there would be, so giving us some flexibility, probably.
Up to two may be, may also be members of the, the Police Advisory Board.
Yeah. So is that something you can amend and bring back to us at the second reading?
I will, okay.
Good call out.
Yeah.
It's a good change.
All right, any other thoughts?
I might get the dream of that too.
You have some strange dreams this week.
All right, yeah, I just want to agree, I think it's a great move, of, uh, safety on our streets, especially for our pedestrians is critical, and having more attention, and what's the word I'm looking for, make sure that committee feels empowered, so I think it's important. All right, so we will continue that to the meeting on May sixth. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our second ordinance, and Sebastian, you are up again.
Thank you, mayor. This is ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-three, this is creating a new board, consistent with council's interest in creating a youth advisory group. This particular proposal will make it a board as well for some of the similar reasons that the previous committee was elevated to a board. The board would be comprised of seven high school age students, and the boundary would be the Sherwood School District boundary, but they don't need to be district's, uh, high school students. The purpose is to educate, engage, and empower young residents by performing, by providing a platform for meaningful involvement in local government and community initiatives. The board term will be two years, it'll be a staggered term, and the very first year of its inception will introduce one-year terms so that we can create that stagger. The board's objective will be to promote community projects, to highlight youth issues, offer input on policies and programs affecting young residents, collaborate with city leaders, and community organizations to boost civic engagement, and develop future leaders committed to civic responsibility. Is there anything?
Awesome, thank you, any written testimony?
I have not received any.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and open up for questions for Sebastian.
Before public hearing and then questions after, I'll save my questions to after.
Well, we have questions before, and then we do a public hearing, so.
He wasn't called out on this one, but I assume they also have a council liaison.
Yes.
Yes, a council liaison would have to be assigned to all boards, yes.
So we'll vote on those two at the second.
At a later date.
I mean, we already know this is gonna be what we need to do.
We'll do an amendment to our current liaison list, yep. All right, that's, no more questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Sylvia, do we have any?
I have none, mayor.
All right, and I do not see anybody online, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion by council?
Yep.
Go for it.
In here, it says, the board shall consist of seven members who are currently enrolled in grades ninth through twelfth at any school or homeschool program located within the boundary of the Sherwood School District. I like that, I'm just wondering if it can have a little bit more teeth to it, I know like on some of our boards, specifically the Police Advisory Board, we have things listed out where we try to target a business owner, a faith leader, there's like four or five, if we can, doesn't necessarily mean, I'm just wondering if it can be something like a, a dedicated held spot for one or two people outside of the normal high school track, or we will attempt, you know what I mean, if.
I, I'd actually look at it completely differently. Why should it be tied to any school at all, just say, eight, grade nine through twelve that lives in the city of Sherwood?
In the school district.
Fine.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, why does it have to be tied to the school district? This is a city board, not a district board.
It doesn't, it says enrolled in any, ninth through twelfth at, at any school or homeschool program.
But didn't you say in the district?
Within the boundary of the Sherwood School District.
Okay, but, so if I go to a private school outside of the Sherwood School District, I'm not eligible?
Well, I think part of that is that there are parts of the school district that are in Wilsonville and in our, and in.
That's covered.
No, I know, but that's why.
But his, well, his question's not covered.
I think if they live.
If you live here and go to Horizon.
I don't think it should be tied to any school district at all, it should just be you live in the city, or you don't live in the city, and you're in the right age range, so.
So that eliminates all the people that are technically outside city boundaries but still in the district.
No, you're in the.
This is a city board, this is not a school district board.
I know, but he's saying, he's saying that he wants it only city board or.
I, I'm less concerned about that, I'm more concerned that we are eliminating the ability, there's two different things here.
So, there's a couple different things in here. There's city bounty versus school district bounty, there was a lot of conversations had about that. My opinion is it needs to be school district bounty because we have a lot of kids in the high school over there that are engaged.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and, and to be left out just because you live a quarter mile over a boundary, but you still go to Sherwood Schools is not right. Now, to the other point you brought up, my suggestion would be is if you live within the district.
If you live within the boundary of the district, you're eligible, and you're the right age range.
So don't even.
Doesn't matter where you go to school.
Don't even say school or homeschool, just if you're in the ninth through twelfth grade age bracket.
And you live within the boundary of the school district.
Yes.
Yeah, then it's.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Awesome.
In favor of that as well.
So, I think there's, Taylor, you good with that?
I am, I think, I also, while I do agree that we want to get a variety and diversity of opinions on stuff, I don't really like the idea of blocking one to, well, you gotta be, you know, one for homeschool, one for private school, one for high school.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't, I mean, I did suggest, it's what I was suggesting, but that's fine.
Right, so I, I like this better because I feel like it gives us, oh, we get the seven best candidates.
It covers everybody, yeah.
And we'll leave it to the, the interviewing staff to be able to figure out, how do we, what are we missing with our current makeup, right? Do we need, you know, female students, we need older students?
I, I do think that during, during the process of staffing this, that should be a consideration. I don't know that I want to have a hard and fast rule, but if we have all seven members that all go to Sherwood High School, I think that's amiss.
And that are all in the current youth and government classes, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I want a variety.
But I don't want to dictate it necessarily.
But I think the process should be like we do with any other board and commission, we have staff, the liaison, and whoever the chair is, once we're established, that review those applications and, and make those decisions. All right, so Sebastian, are you clear on the change we need to make?
I am clear, yes, I can make that change for the next public hearing.
For the next session, oh, for our next, um, reading of the ordinance, so if, any other thoughts or questions?
Again, just super happy, I know Renee's been championing this since before I even got on council, I was, I will say, when I first got on council, I was one of the major, most skeptical voices on the purpose of this, and whether I thought there was value in it for a number of years, I have been completely swayed to the other viewpoint, probably a couple of years ago, and now I've been pushing along with Renee and many others of all of us, I think we've all been in favor of, of something on these lines for a number of years now, so I'm excited that we're here.
Well, first of all, I, I love the fact with this council that many of us are swayed and willing to change our opinions and work with each other, and that's awesome. I, this is something I've wanted for a long time, and so I'm super happy, and I, I just want to add to that, it's a good time to bring it up, we just got back from Washington DC, and part of this program is we're looking at taking kids to the National League of Oregon Cities Congressional Conference, and we took five kids this year, and it was amazing. I will, I know Renee and some others will want to comment on that in council comments, so I'll leave it to that, but those kids had an amazing time, so. But with that, there's no more questions or discussion, we will go ahead and continue this to May sixth.
I would just like to say, I can remember the council goal setting session, we were sitting in the classroom at the Sherwood Center for the Arts when we first had this conversation, this is back in two thousand fifteen, so what is this, eight? Oh wow, ten years later, finally.
That was the holder of council, yeah.
Very cool, awesome. All right, so we are done with that, thank you everybody, so we're gonna move on to city manager report.
I just have a few things tonight, just want to remind everybody Trash Palooza this Saturday, ten AM at the, uh, cannery site. Senior, I just want to let everybody know, senior leadership's working on the twenty-five, twenty-seven buzz, budget, things are going well as a team. So, and we also have moved out the budget committee meetings by one week, so instead of starting on the fifteenth, it'll be starting on the twenty-second, twenty-ninth, and then June fifth if we need it. We also have volunteer recognition on Wednesday, May thirteenth at six o'clock, I believe that's at the Art Center. And then I just update, as you know, we were looking at chunk of property out in Sherwood West, we closed on that yesterday, so the city owns eight acres out there for a future park site. And then just, kind of right now on the bridge for the schedule of the last couple spans is in May, they're looking to put them up about the weekend, either the weekend of the seventeenth or the weekend after that, so we'll know more as we get a little closer. And then, lastly, the mayor and I went back to DC last week, we went back looking for money for the tanrey site, we need about two and a half million dollars more, I believe we have about eight hundred thousand that we can get out of the federal government. We also discussed the downtown Old Town sewer replacement project of about two-point-three million dollars, and that project really consists of replacing the sewers in the alley, as well as, that's the first stage of other utility improvements, as well as getting to the actual paved alleys, so that's what we actually, I went back there for, as well as, we talked to folks about six hundred thousand for Sherwood, Southwest Sherwood Sewer Line Replacement Project, as well as projects for broadband, so, mayor, I'll let you speak to, if you have anything on the trip or not, but.
I, it was, I thought it was a good trip, we met with a representative, Salinas, we actually got a lot of time with Merkley, Senator Merkley, which was great, he was very engaged, we met with Wyden's staff, and, um, it's a tough year because they just did a continuing resolution to kick the budget out to October first, so, but we still need to do the effort to get our projects lined up and hopefully get, get our projects approved. They have a different term for it, but we're basically lobbying for earmarks from the federal government to do some of these projects, and this is something we've been actively pursuing for the last six years, and we've had really good results over the last, I mean, we've, we got three million dollars for Ice Age, we got a million dollars for the broadband expansion, our lobbying efforts include the state, which we've gotten four million for the bridge, we got nine million federal grant for broadband expression, so there's, it's, these, these efforts, these trips, the money we spend with our consultants is well worth the return that we're getting, but yeah, it was a great, great trip.
That's all I have.
Awesome, thanks, great.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to council announcements, and Doug, you're all by yourself down there, I thought you might like to go first.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot, um, today, Parks Board did not meet this month, you know, shout out, you, you mentioned this in your update, but great job, you and the staff and everyone involved in getting that property closed, like, you know, done, well done on that front. Obviously, you know, the weather's getting good again, look for cyclists, look for pedestrians, if you're one of those people and you're out at dusk or dawn, please wear bright clothes or reflectors or lights or something, old people like me, it's harder and harder to see at night, so, please, please be safe, and, yeah, I don't, I, I feel like I had another thing, but I forgot what it was, so I'll just defer for now, and maybe I'll think of it later.
Awesome, thanks.
I'm excited, mayor, older than dirt, just teasing.
Feel like you're, you're laying the.
Just teasing, just teasing.
You're laying the groundwork for an alibi is what I hear. It's premeditated there.
Just teasing.
I don't know, I, I agree, I, it's harder and harder, anyways.
I just wouldn't say I was old.
So Renee, you're next, since you.
Are we going in age, in age?
Yeah, we're going up.
First, I'm happy to hear that the budget meetings have been pushed back a week because I'm going to be in Columbia for the first, I would have been in Columbia for the first one, so I won't be missing budget. You've already mentioned Trash Palooza, let's see, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, it's the last week, I think it was last week, at Pearl O, and that brand-new building, it's massive, it's even bigger than the first one that we went to a couple of years ago, and it was just a nice opportunity, we're about twenty, twenty-five people, I think we're there to share updates and business ideas and concepts, and then hear what Pearl O has in store for those, those areas, those buildings. Last night, attended the strategic plan meeting for the Old Town Sherwood area, I thought it was very insightful, we really focused on infill and development and the vision that that might be for this community. I found it really fascinating, there was some, oh my gosh, we're gonna do that type of a thing, nothing is certain, it's, it's concepts and ideas, but I found it kind of a breath of fresh air, of the idea of what, what Old Town could look like going forward. And then, I've been attending the Main Street Sherwood meetings, the update there is that they have a wine walk on May eighth, I think there's still about four hundred tickets for sale, so there's a lot of tickets available. They had a really successful fall in love with Old Town, they had about a thousand people who participated in that event, and they too have worked on a strategic plan for Main Street Sherwood. One of the outcomes of that was a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that has been written to help enhance the mosaic art loft building.
Five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand.
Is it awarded?
They don't know that it's been awarded yet, that they submitted the grant.
That's amazing, yeah.
I also participated in the executive committee for the Water Consortium Group, I was elected chair, I think it was last year, and they want me to chair again this next year, so that'll be a vote on the sixth of June, I believe it is, but it was another insightful meeting and, and talking about the idea of water conservation, as well as how we can be prepared in a disaster for water. Lastly, I know it's two months out, but Cruising Sherwood's coming up on June twenty-first, and if you want to volunteer, if you want to be a sponsor or be a vendor, go to sherwoodchamber.com. This will be the first year in eighteen years that I won't be volunteering, I'll be in Calgary, so that's kind of sad, but that's my update.
Awesome, thank you, and I'm gonna be at Space Camp that week, so I won't be able to go either, so.
No beer garden for you.
No beer garden for me. Taylor? All right, Planning Commission did not have a meeting, but we do have one coming up on the twenty-fifth, currently, so all of you, planning aficionados out there, the drought is over, you can, you can attend the meeting. And, let's see, we did have, I actually attended the school board meeting as well, just as a parent, but Sound of Music is performing this Thursday, no, sorry, this Friday and Saturday, and it has a matinee on Saturday at the high school, and then next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and it is gonna be phenomenal, I actually don't have anybody on stage, but I have, my wife and son are in the pit, so that's how I know about it, playing the violin. Congratulations, they also said that the honor roll had been released, and so congratulations to all the students that, that did that, and additionally, so I was gonna mention.
to all the students that, that did that, and additionally, so I was gonna mention the, the Cruising Sherwood as well. It does take a lot of volunteers to, to help out there, and honestly, it's pretty fun, and you get to, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of jobs, so even, I, I don't know a lot about cars other than, you know, I like red ones, I like shiny ones. I mean, that's about my level of car knowledge, but you're able to help out and you're able to make it a fun event, so go sign up for that, and the Chamber always does a great job of that. And yeah, I was at the Perlo Open House with the Chamber, and frankly, all I could think of was, can the city somehow put some insurance money together to make it a big roller rink until we get, it was this giant, smooth cement floor, and I just thought, boy, until we get a tenant in here, we just need this to be a roller rink, but, anyway, so that's, that's it for me.
Awesome, uh, thank you. I just had, no, it's Kim's turn, I'm sorry.
I too was on my way to Perlo for that Chamber meeting when I got a work call and turned back, had to go back home. Sometimes work calls in the midst of volunteering job. I attended this last Monday night, the Region One Area Commission on Transportation, and we had an interest, interesting presentation that I knew nothing about. It's called the Bus on Shoulder Program, and it's an innovative congestion management tool that improves transit reliability. It authorizes transit providers to drive in the shoulder to bypass the congestion, and I guess it's used in over 25 other metropolitan areas. I didn't know we had two existing ones already, the I-205 across the Glen Jackson Bridge, between Oregon and Washington, and then I-5 between Tufts and Wilsonville. Well, there are three more that are gonna take place, between the Oregon 212 to 82nd Street Drive, southbound only, Oregon 43 to 10th Street, northbound and southbound, and 10th Street to Stafford Road, northbound and southbound.
10th Street where, here in Sherwood?
To Stafford, 10th Street to Stafford, yeah. I-205.
I-205.
Yes. The construction elements, this is a fairly easy job to, to make this happen. They have to relocate some rumble strips, do striping and signing, and so, um, the design began in August, and then they'll do, the bid closing is May 22nd, and construction largely complete by October 31st of this year. So, um, that's being funded by a program called Carbon Reduction Program Grant with Fix-It Funds as a match. This new service, Wilsonville to Clackamas Town Center, proposed stops will be Wilsonville Transit Center, Stafford Road, West Lynn, Oregon City, and Clackamas Town Center. Proposed service hours will be like Monday through Friday, 5:45 AM to 8:00 PM. There's an annual cost and all that good stuff. Anyways, I just didn't even know that was a program, so that was a very interesting presentation that we had last Monday. That's all I have.
That's all you got? Awesome. I just got a, I already mentioned the DC trip, which I thought was super productive, and, and we barely made it out of DC before those two airplanes hit each other on the taxiway there.
Talk about that.
I'm just glad no one was hurt, but I'm just glad we weren't there when that happened. The, it's terms of some of the other things I've been doing, I missed the WCCC meeting this week, so I'll get an update from my alternate, Beach Pace from Hillsborough, on what occurred there, but I was, took one of my kids to tour Lewis and Clark on that day, which was a lot of fun. And the supportive housing services program, which I sit on the work group that's working through that, we had a, one of our best sessions yet where we talked more about KPIs and vision and what that program needs to look like, and that program is basically a regional program funded by a tax that Metro implemented that's paying for a lot of the supportive housing services and housing, not permanent housing, but all the tools that you need around that to get people from where they are and where their space, living on the streets, into permanent housing. So that was a good meeting, and I think that's all I got.
Great, we can let everybody go home early tonight.
I think so, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.